Any other correspondence?
No. Good administrative, excuse me, administrative review items. 5D1 is 22236 ZON Capalvo Stonington Realty LLC. Zoning permit application for change of use from restaurant to retail smoke shop property located at 37 South Broad, Pawtucket, assessors map 14, block one, lot four, zone GC60. This is just a change of use from a restaurant, the Rise Juice Bar, to a retail smoke shop in about 1,000 square foot section of the Pawtucket Shopping Center. Existing signs will just be reused, no changes to the site or restaurant, no changes to the site or building exterior proposed. Parking demand per zoning will decrease from a 50-seat restaurant, conforms to the requirements of the GC60 Commercial District there.
Any questions from the commission?
What do they sell in the smoke shop? What's...
See if they specify here. I mean, usually it's sort of smoking accessories and cigarettes and tobacco.
Okay, cigars and...
I don't know in this, in their case...
I would assume all tobacco products.
Okay.
Yeah. Didn't really get into it.
Sounds like it'd be a reduction of usage from the restaurant.
Yeah, yeah.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve the application as submitted.
Thank you, Ryan. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chuck. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I did want to just... I'm not going to argue with the approval of this, but just... We, when we were going through the process for the cannabis retail and that sort of thing in the town, we talked a lot about the limits on the numbers of these ancient establishments. And I'm just curious if that's something the commission would like to consider, because I think there are now like half a dozen of these within a two-mile radius of that area.
Hmm, seriously? Wow.
You know, I don't know if it's something we need to talk about tonight, but I just want to put it out there.
Keith, is that something we can... Do they talk about the hours? I didn't see that in there.
They say the hours?
In your staff report, I didn't see that.
Uh, no, not mentioned.
Is that something perhaps you're thinking we could bring up during the rewrite of the regulations? Perhaps?
That's, that's why I'm raising it, yeah. Just to put it on the record that maybe it's something we want to consider. It's just, how many smoke shops do we need? And maybe I'm being unfair to smoke shops, but it sounds like there's a lot. That's my discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Lineup 5D2, TZ 2003, ZC SPA and CAM Mystic Seaport, request for a minor site plan modifications and our minor building renovations, previously approved applications for a three-story restaurant boutique hotel and accessory structures. Property located at 75 Greenmanville Ave Mystic, assessors map 173, block one, lot one, zone MHD. And Mr. Frost here to summarize this.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
For the record, my name is Chad Frost with Kent Frost Landscapes Architecture. I'm here tonight representing the Mystic Seaport Museum and Greenwich Hospitality Group, which is the developer building the hotel at the Seaport property, which you're all familiar with as we approved it back in 2020. And I was before you a few months ago for some modifications. As they've gone further into development plans and got into more engineering, a few more revisions were necessary, which is why we're back in front of you again tonight. Again, utilizing that same section 8.3.6.1 for minor site plan modifications that we feel will not significantly impact the natural resources, drainage, traffic generation, parking demand, aesthetics or landscaping buffers, community character or quality of life. So I'll run through them quickly. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take questions whenever. The first is a new vestibule. If you'll remember, so same format from last time, we had the approved plan on top, the revised plan on the bottom, and that's the basement. But there were some floor plan changes. First off was the basement. If you remember last time we were here, we were expanding the basement, making the kitchen in the basement larger so they could accommodate all the cooking space they needed. As they got into the geotech report and all the structural came back, and really the amount of slab needed to hold the building down in a flood event, it became extremely cost prohibitive to put the kitchen in the basement. So there was, now there's a reduction in that basement area. So the top is the plan that was approved back in July, and the bottom is the proposed. It's the same scale. So you can see the bathrooms that are accessible from the outside of the structure are there and there, and there's still some utility space in that basement area, but all of the kitchen space has been removed and pushed to the first floor. So that's the main change on the basement level. Because of that, because the kitchen came up to the first floor, there was then some first floor shifts that had to happen. All the uses on the first floor remain the same. There's still a restaurant, there's a ballroom, there's a kitchen, and there's the hotel lobby. What happened, I'll remind you that we had a tear, a front porch, a hallway across the front, the kitchen prep area here, hallway through to the restaurant, and these are the public bathrooms in the restaurant, or in the lobby, excuse me. And of those plan, we still have the covered porch across the front, but now the hallway that connected is now gone because the kitchen has expanded up to include that hallway, and the hallway that came through the center has now been also encompassed by that kitchen. So the kitchen now occupies this space. The ballroom remains unchanged. The restaurant got slightly reduced just for the amount of kitchen space. The bathrooms are still there, the lobby is still there. So that's primarily the changes on the first floor. Again, it was the kitchen going from the basement up onto that first floor. Uses unchanged.
So the flow will go around left and right versus up the middle?
Correct. And so that last time, if you'll recall, we asked for a vestibule under the porch to come this way. Now we need a vestibule on the opposite side of the porch, so the ballroom gets to go that way, hotel gets to go this way. The other one, which you can see here on the floor plan too, out on the terrace, which was, has been in the plans, because of that, that change of use, the bar got shifted a little further over, and it was felt that to better serve the patrons, to have an exterior bar that can service the restaurant portion of the deck would be better than trying to have the bar runners run through the restaurant, through the terrace and down. And so at this point, we're proposing a bar out on the terrace, which should be all of your packets. That's just an environment view of the bar and a couple of 3D renderings of what it will look like. I'll note that the top of the bar is even with the railing that goes all the way around the porch, so it'll fit right in and it's not sticking up and above and calling attention to itself. Per health code, we're required to put a roof of some sort over it, so it can't rain into the service area, and we're proposing a stretched canvas cloth roof. And we're doing that so that it doesn't block the view of the building, it doesn't block the view from the building out to the river. It's as minimalistic as possible, which we think these computer renderings show as well. Same amount of floor area outside on the terrace, it hasn't expanded to encompass that. The bar's just occupied some of that space. I'll note that, because I think in Keith's report, he did note about the seats that are shown within the plans themselves. On the, the original approval that we got back two years ago, we had an approval for 530 seats. We've never shown 530 seats on any plan, and that's specifically because, because it has event functions, we know the events will be sometimes on the front lawn, sometimes on the back lawn. It's furniture, the tables and chairs will be moved. We have a maximum number of tables and chairs approved at that 530. This plan, although it's showing a few more seats than the last plan, is showing 423 seats. So still about 100 seats less than what was approved in the original, so we're not exceeding the original approval at all. And then lastly, or not quite lastly, but handicap lifts. If you remember last time we were here, we talked about all these handicap ramps to get people from the different levels. After going through all of that, they've now realized that that's, to run all those different ramps is pretty expensive in addition to not, it's fairly unsightly to have that many ramps all the way around and not the greatest mode to get people from where they want to be to where they want to go. So they're proposing to put a lift on the north and south end of the building. Obviously takes up significantly less amounts of real estate as opposed to the three ramps there, it just goes down to one single lift. So there's a single lift at the end of the terrace that services down to the ground. The ramp in the middle that connects from the deck to the terrace still stays. And then there's a ramp on the north side that goes from the terrace level down to grade as well.
So there are two lifts. Are they outside?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Exterior lifts.
There was always ramps though, right?
What?
There was always ramps.
Yes.
So you don't have marked, demarked in the drawing as lifts? At least in this drawing, I don't...
Okay, so they should be, yeah, they're, they're right there and there. I can definitely come up and point them out to you if you want to see them specifically on the plan.
No, I got it now, I got it now, but it's not, it doesn't say...
We didn't probably directly call out right to it.
Yeah, thank you.
So ADA regulations don't require any sort of fail-safe accessibility should the lifts be out of service or anything?
So there are a whole bunch of regulations, and ADA is one. ADA is kind of a civil portion, and then you have the building code portion as well. Building code allows for about 10 different exceptions where you can put in lifts, and you do have, have to have areas of respite and things like that. We have had preliminary talks with Larry about it, and there are some questions about if the lifts can truly replace the ramps in both of those situations. So what we'd be asking tonight is to be able to have the ability based on both Larry and as well as the state building official, whichever they seem, whichever they tell us we have to do, we'll either put in the ramps or we'll put in the lifts. The client would prefer to put in the lifts because they think it's the best solution. If for some reason either Larry or the state building official tell us we can't do that, then we'll put in the ramps as previously approved.
Understood.
I know nothing about lifts. Are they, you can operate it yourself from a wheelchair? I mean, in most...
Yep, there's, there's controlled access, top and bottom. You go up, there's a bunch of requirements obviously for how close you can get to be able to push the button and still have room to operate. You get...
Is there additional lighting included if you did the lifts?
We do have lighting around that so that, yes, you can, you can see that as well. Yep, have full safe access top to bottom. And I will say they are, they are used around town already. There are several actually on campus within the Seaport already, because they are more efficient than a full-blown elevator from a cost perspective. And a lot of places where you can only run like a half-story, which is this case, you can't get a full elevator run kind of a half-story anyway, so you do this smaller electronic lift.
Right.
But you make the same provisions like within an elevator where you have to have areas of refuge, so that if the power is out and there is an emergency, both the hotel staff and emergency know where to go get somebody if they need help.
Do you, do you have any sense of how people actually use these lifts or ramps? What their preference is? Is there, you have any feeling for that?
Honestly, no. You know, we, we like to be as universally accessible as possible wherever we plan anything. At the Seaport, we try to be, we plan not just for those with mobility challenges and wheelchairs, but all, especially for families and strollers and things like that was where we have a lot more of that type of activity. This being a restaurant and a hotel, there's not quite as much of that demand, and because we're, we are putting the ramp that primarily serves between the restaurant and that terrace, we think that's the primary area to use, and it makes the most sense for the ramp, and it'll be less used to the north and south to go basically from that higher elevation all the way down to grade.
So there's no handicapped access on the front of the building?
Handicapped access on the front of the building is completely flush.
Oh.
So we, we were able to, again, because of the grade and all sorts of things we had out there, you know, we're at river elevation on the backside. At the front side, we lifted the grade to be able to come in, you know, flush.
Yeah.
Easy ADA accessibility. All right. And then the final thing we're here tonight for is additional lighting on the pool deck and the terrace area. So this was the approved plan, the lighting plan from the original approval back in 2020. At that point, all of the lighting on the back area, we had LED strips underneath all of the steps. That accounted for 486 linear feet of LED lighting. As we ran photometrics, it became fairly obvious that the lights were going to be, the steps, excuse me, were going to be overlit, and some of the outside areas were going to be underlit. In addition, as we started talking to the state health department for the pool, they have some requirements on how much lighting is required for a public pool on the pool deck itself. And so we, we needed to increase the amount of light getting on the pool deck right through here, and our goal was then to spread out the light that we had really kind of almost highlighted on the steps and, and more evenly distributed amongst the site. So what we did was instead of highlighting every little step with the LED strip, we put an LED strip in the under, in the cap of the railing that comes around the pool and around the terrace and on the handicap ramp, right? So that we get a low-level light around the perimeter. It's not visible, it's fully 100% cutoff because it's literally mounted up into a channel on the underside of the handrail. Then on the steps, the stainless steel handrails with little puck lights on the underside of the handrail, it's the exact same light fixture that we used at the Thompson Building to light the front steps and the back steps there. Low-level lights, only three little lights on the underside of the handrail. And then in order to get the necessary lighting on the pool deck itself, because we don't have any fixtures close to there, we didn't really want to have a bright pole light or anything like that that would be kind of glare. On the underside of the eve of the porch, right? So there's the, the back porch where that seating area is, as the, the roof comes down and the posts are back here, we're going to mount a little downlight up tucked underneath the eve, aimed down at the pool deck. It'll have a full cutoff, it'll have a honeycomb baffle in it, and it'll be angled 100% down to be able to direct the light in a downward fashion onto the pool deck, so we get light right where we need it and don't let it cast off anywhere else. So that was the, the primary changes from a lighting perspective.
And the state's okay with that lighting program?
Yes. We made, they have a two-foot candle requirement, which we can meet with that. So I think that's the majority of the changes. Again, we see these all are really minor, don't raise, we don't think there's any impact, let alone a significant impact to any of the requirements per, per your code. Happy to take any more questions.
Any other questions?
Does, you know, we had the benefit of contour maps when we looked at the first plans, and, and we don't with this. Does this change the relationship vertically with regard to anything that previously was not in floodplain zone and now is?
No, no, 100% no grading changes whatsoever. The original, all the original grading stays as is.
Does this make it easier or impossible still to pursue a Loma for the hotel?
It doesn't make it impossible. It shouldn't have any effect, to be honest with you, because we're not, we're not doing any grading changes. We're not, the only thing that we're, you know, this back deck is basically a true deck as opposed to a filled condition.
I always thought there was a way to grade this so that the 100-year flood elevation didn't touch the building.
It's, we're really close. It's the north side, this side, you know, we're within 15...
I remember exactly where it touched.
Yes, that's, that's the hard part.
I've been through a lot of these kinds of exercises, and I still encourage you to try to make it work and pursue a Loma. FEMA is much more amenable these days to Loma Cs and Loma, all kinds of Lomas. And I do them all the time, and, and it works pretty easily. It isn't an impediment to the project the way it used to be. It's like a 30-day process. So if you can make it work, try to make it work.
We will definitely recommend that.
Otherwise, I have no other questions.
I have one question.
Very good explanation.
Thank you.
Out of curiosity, are you planning on having any outdoor music or entertainment at the bar now?
There was all, the same as the original approval, that events that were happening within the bar could happen outside on both either the terrace or that riverside lawn just as they happened today. So, so the exact same functions as Latitude 41 currently uses in the same space.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
And I should have noted that the outdoor bar, Latitude has one currently, so this isn't a change for, for the addition of the bar in this project either.
Okay.
Any other questions? I have a couple. You don't show any handicap parking in the plan. Is that...
It's, it has, it remains unchanged from the original approval. We have handicap parking in the, in these, the front circle where we have spaces all the way around.
They just weren't labeled as...
Correct.
In this plan?
It's not labeled, but the front couple are handicap.
That's what I thought from the previous plan.
Yep.
This won't alter the public access to the park next door, correct?
Not at all. If anything, we think it enhances it.
Well, it's all fence around the pool, but I'm assuming that's just a fence around the pool.
We have to have a fence around the pool.
Yeah, yeah.
But, and that was, we had the fence around the pool originally, stays the same now, but public access remains the same.
And the last question is purely as a, well, someone who goes to a bar occasionally. These seats in the patio deck area are all looking at the ramp. You're looking at, wouldn't you want to flip those around and look at the river?
What you're looking at is, there, there, it's hard to see on that graphic. There's a bench that will be built all the way along the ramp.
Oh, okay.
So there'll be a bench there looking out to the river, and then a table, and then what you're seeing is a chair looking...
The 2D rendering wasn't showing that. Okay, so that's one long bench the whole way through?
It's one long bench with tables in front of it and chairs then, yes, looking towards the river.
Now I understand. Thank you. That makes sense.
But also why the ramp, or I should say where the bar is located, so that, you know, when you're at the bar, you're looking at the view of the river as opposed to inverse.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
No other questions? Fred?
How many seats will be at the bar? Will there be seats or...
I think we have about 14 shown right now, if I, just from memory, 12 to 14, and then obviously all the restaurants seating around it.
This is it, the final version, the final final?
I sure hope so. I've never had to come back for, for three bites at the apple for any application ever before, so...
I'm surprised you don't have the full entourage with you tonight. It's, uh...
It's, it's getting a little, yeah, yeah.
Well, I hope it works this time. Do I hear, what's the commission's pleasure here this evening?
I would make a motion to approve the application as submitted.
Thank you, Ryan.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chuck. Discussion?
Excuse me, well, there was the recommended stipulation about the handicap lifts may be replaced with ramps if not permitted by the building code.
Oh, I thought you had mentioned that is, that was part of the, okay, we can add that. It's a separate stipulation. Okay, make a motion to approve the application with the additional stipulation that Keith outlined for the handicap lifts and ramps.
Second.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Discussion? No other questions? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So carried.
Thank you again.
Thank you. We won't see you again, right?
Well, you will, but hopefully not for this.
Lineup 5D3, ZON 22245Z, excuse me, 452 Liberty Street LLC. Zoning permit application for change of use from accessory to office and modification of existing parking and driveway. Property located at 452 Liberty Street, Pawtucket, assessors map 18, block four, lot 12, zone So with this property, there was a change of use of the primary structure in the front from a single-family house to a real estate office, approved, approved last year. So that already occurred. What this application is requesting is for the rear building, which is a 400, 540-square-foot residential garage, to convert that to office space in the structure behind the real estate office. And the other thing is modification of the existing parking and driveway area. There's an existing four-space parking lot that'll be expanded to the north by five feet to add four more parking spaces that'll accommodate the extra commercial space on the lot there. The site driveway needs to be widened slightly to meet the required 24-foot width. And vegetation on the, invasive vegetation on the northern property line will be removed, replaced with nine arborvitae trees there. The parking lot expansion required a variance to reduce the CS5 zones buffer requirement from an adjacent house from 15 feet down to nine feet, and to reduce the parking lot buffer requirement from 20 feet to nine feet. And these variances were approved by the ZBA last week. So with that variance, the application conforms to the CS5 requirements. You know, recommended stipulation here is that the application says office space, it really seems to make no difference zoning-wise whether it's office space or personal services or retail, especially in a small 540-square-foot building. So just a stipulation that the rear building may also be permitted as personal services or retail. And the owners are here if there's any, any other questions.
Any questions?
No.
Make a motion to, make a motion to approve the application as submitted with the stipulation that Keith outlined for the rear building to also serve as personal services or retail.
Thank you, Ryan. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chuck. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's the fastest meeting decision we've ever made. Congratulations.
And if anyone is here for the public hearing that was scheduled tonight for 56 Whitehall Avenue, that, that will be rescheduled until the next meeting on November 1st. So other than that, we're back to the old business of opting out of the state statutes on accessory dwelling units.
Mr. Chairman, should I make a motion to open or to hold a vote on that? I think that's how we closed it.
Yeah, the public hearing was closed, and I should mention too, for that seated were the four regular members and Ms. Selinger.
Oh, Ms. Sel, okay. There we go. You're not on, Andy. Marge is. All right. Okay. I don't need to, I think we need to have a formal...
Okay.
Keith just read it in. What are people's thinkings on this?
I'll start off. I thought Andy made a good argument about accepting, or a good proposal about accepting the state, state regulations, but I feel after thinking about it that I think it would better serve Stonington to opt out. I think we've already taken some good steps toward, you know, modifying our accessory dwelling regulations to become, you know, more accessible and, and, you know, more usable for the town. And in conjunction with the rewrite of our regulations, I think it would make sense for us, we can address it specifically there and be more specific and responsive to the town's concerns.
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree. We did spend a fair amount of time on this, coming up with our own regulations, and it'd be good to see how they work. And, and, you know, if they don't work well, we have another opportunity to fix that. The, the other thing is I have a rather basic objection to letting the state decide our zoning. You know, this is now another example of the state stepping in and deciding things for us. But, but seriously, I think we have a good set of regulations, and I think we ought to give them a try.
Marge?
I agree. Yeah, after thinking about it further, I agree with both of you guys.
Chuck?
Mr. Chairman, I, I think we had a lot of good public comments... Mr. Chairman, I, I think we had a lot of good public comment that, as Ryan said, sort of opened my eyes to, to, you know, the public's feelings about the state regulation and some of the benefits to it. And I've fully considered the comments. I just don't feel that, that state mandates and state regulations that can be modified in subsequent years, you know, they say if they put a statute on the record, just wait for the next version of it and wait for the changes. I think what I heard from, from some of the more informed members of the audience that had constructive comments, and all the comment was good, was that there are some provisions in that regulation that if adopted, would be beneficial to rental units, and I agree. And I think it's, we're in a very good position right now to take that constructive comment that we got, modify our regulations to adopt what's good in the state regulation, continue to monitor the state regulation, and continue to modify our own regulations. As Fred said very well, it works, our regulation works. We were way out in front of the state on this. So if we modify our regulation to respond to some of the constructive comments we got and to adopt the more progressive portions of the state regulation, I think we're being responsive to all the comments that we got. And, and I'd like to suggest that if we make a motion to adopt, that that be reviewed during our regulation review, and that our regulation be made to look more like the state's regulation in areas where we can all consent on that.
Makes sense, thank you, Chuck.
Sorry for that long-winded explanation.
No, I, after Andy's last comments, went and read the 28-page substitute House bill numerous times. I'm not a lawyer, but there are some points I'd like to read into the record, just because I think, things to think about during our rewrite. On page seven, number 10, "In any municipality that is contiguous to or on a navigable waterway draining to Long Island Sound, A, be made with reasonable consideration for the restoration and protection of the ecosystem and habitat of Long Island Sound; B, be designed to reduce hypoxia, pathogens, toxic contaminants, and floatable debris on Long Island Sound; and C, provide that such municipality zoning commission consider the environmental impact on Long Island Sound coastal resources as defined in Section 22A-93 of any proposal for development." That seems to be a pretty, could give us quite a bit of leverage. So I'd like to think about that when we go into the rewrites.
Correct. Agreed.
Be patient with me, since we are zooming right along. Page eight, number nine. The first part, I'll just read it. "Require estimates of vehicle miles traveled and vehicle trips generated in lieu of or in addition to level of service traffic calculations to assess A, anticipate, the anticipated traffic impact of proposed developments, and B, potential mitigation strategies such as reducing the amount of required parking for development or requiring public sidewalks, crosswalks, bicycle paths, bicycle racks, or bus shelters, including off-site." Again, that seems to be giving us some leverage to request sidewalks, that we may not have had as much leverage in the past. So that seems...
Yeah, something to consider.
Keeping note of, yeah, in the future. I won't read it all. Section six, numbers one through seven. We'll get into those weeds when we do the regulation rewrite, but I'll just note it, that that one section is worthwhile, keeping in mind in the future. Thank you. Any other discussion or questions?
So, any recommended stipulations or is it a straight vote?
No, you know, I would just recommend referencing the, what's the word I'm looking for? The draft resolution on page 25 of the staff report. It just sort of spells out the reasons for opting out.
Do we need to read those into the record as part of the motion, or I just want to understand how?
I think the, there's a suggested motion, and it's, it's a good one. It's got two stipulations in it, one of which is, makes reference to the comprehensive rewrite. So if we, if we adopt the motion on page 25, the last page of Keith's recommended review memorandum, and he's got a recommended resolution in there, or suggested resolution, if you just take a look at that.
Okay. Let me see that here.
Want me to read it?
I can read it, yeah, I can. So I can make the motion as a draft, make a resolution. Whereas regulatory limitations regarding accessory dwelling units of Public Act 2129 became effective on January 1, 2022, and whereas Public Act 2129 allows a municipality to opt out of the regulatory limitations regarding accessory dwelling units by January 1, 2023, and whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission publishes public notices of the public hearings on date, and that is one part, I don't have the dates.
Yeah, we, I don't have them handy, but we published them.
They were published on two separate dates, as I understand it here. Therefore, be it resolved that the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Stonington has affirmatively opted out of the accessory dwelling unit provisions of the Public Act 2029, 21-29 for the following reasons. In 2018, recognizing the benefit to the community, the town liberalized its zoning regulations regarding the permitting of accessory dwelling units. Two, the Planning and Zoning Commission is in the process of comprehensively rewriting its zoning regulations, and this process may result in logistical changes that further reflect the goals of Public Act 2129. Be it further resolved that this notice of action is forwarded to the Stonington Board of Selectment to complete the process of opting out. The effective date of this action is October, what is today's date?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. And if it is adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Stonington, can edit on the 18th day of 2022, October 18th.
Second.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Chuck. Any discussion? Fred? Marge?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No one's opposed. So carried. Who seconded it? Chuck seconded it.
Thank you.
Sorry. Any other business in front of us this evening?
No, that's it.
I have to kill another hour before I can go home. You can stop at one of those bars.
I was just going to say.
Find something to debate?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Thank you, Ryan.
Second.
Thank you, Fred. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.